And it is now six o'clock on October the fourth, 2022, and this meeting will now come to order. Like to welcome everyone to Richland County Council's regular session. Madam Clerk, if you would, please, call the room.
Malinowski.
Here.
Pew.
Here.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Yeah.
Tereshia.
Here.
Joe Walker.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
O'Walker.
Present.
Mackey.
Here.
English.
Present.
Newton.
Here.
Have a quorum.
Next item on the agenda is the invocation that will be provided by the Honorable Joe Walker. Councilman Walker, you're recognized.
Hey, Mr. Chair, let's pray. Heavenly Father, you tell us in your word that where two or more of your servants are gathered, there you shall be also. Tonight, I'm confident in and grateful for your presence here in this place. I'm grateful that you are a God of love and mercy, willing to commune at a table full of sinners. I'm grateful you see fit to continue to bestow your blessing upon us despite our continued sin and our turning our backs to you. Your love surpasses our understanding for that, I'm also grateful. I pray tonight that we, your children, would glorify you. Glorify you through our words, our actions, our decisions. My prayer is that your kingdom would be furthered as a result of this gathering, whether it is the planting of a tiny seed or the full revelation of your angels, I pray your kingdom come. God, as tonight, Father, be here amongst us and bestow upon us the wisdom of David as we strive to do the work we are called to do with the humble grace you've exemplified for us. It is in Jesus's name that I pray, amen. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Thank you, Councilman Walker, and I'm going to repeat something, and I said the last time Councilman Walker gave the invocation, and that is, if you're wondering why he's not seeking reelection, I think it's abundantly clear that someone has headed to seminary. Next item on the agenda is item four, which is the presentation of proclamations. Item four A, Community Planning Month Proclamation, that will be given by the Honorable Shaqis Newton, the Honorable Bill Malinowski, the Honorable Gretchen Baron, the Honorable Yvonne McBride, and the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Newton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas good community planning provides opportunities for all people to be meaningfully involved in making the choices that determine how change will occur in their community. And whereas good planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in community planning and policy implementation. And whereas the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas the American Planning Association and the American Institute of Certified Planners endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of planning commissions and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of Richland County, South Carolina. And whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional and volunteer community planners of Richland County, South Carolina, and extend them our heartfelt thanks for their service. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that Richland County Council members Bill Malinowski, Yvonne McBride, Gretchen Baron, Jessica Mackey, and Shaqis Newton proclaim the month of October 2022 as Community Planning Month in Richland County, South Carolina in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month.
Is anyone present? Okay.
Mr. Chair, while we're getting at me, I say a few words.
You are recognized.
Thank you.
Mr. Jensen.
Very briefly, thirty years ago, I attended my first planning commission meeting at the ripe age of nineteen. I was representing one of my father's clients, he was in California, and the client was in Utah, and I was at the University of Utah. I never imagined, after that terrible performance I gave at that planning commission meeting, that I would ever do this as a profession. I didn't think they would let me in, to be honest. So I just want to say to all of the folks who are here that planning is one of the most important things that government does. It touches every single person. The, a person's home is typically their greatest single investment financially. And so when we have good processes that engage people, we are protecting their investment and we are protecting them as individuals. So I am very grateful to be part of Richland County and to be part of the community planning that we do here.
I'll remind my colleagues over there that we have a council meeting rather than a photo shoot. And I meant that in jest, by the way, I know we have to vote tonight, so. Next item on the agenda is item four B, another presentation of proclamations. Catch the Comet Month Proclamation that will be given by the Honorable Allison Terasio and the Honorable Overture Walker. Mr. Terasio, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Whereas the Comet, officially the Central Midlands Regional Transit Authority, CMRTA, referred to hereafter as the Comet, is a regional transportation authority formed by Richland County, City of Columbia, and Lexington County by the Central Midlands Council of Governments. Whereas the Comet consists of an intergovernmental agreement signed by Richland County, the City of Columbia, the City of Forest Acres, and Lexington County to fund, operate, and maintain public transit services and mass transportation in Richland and Lexington Counties in the Columbia metropolitan area of South Carolina. And whereas October sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, marks the twentieth anniversary of the Comet as a regional transit authority. And whereas the Comet supports and provides opportunities for additional mobility through partnerships with several entities, including but not limited to the University of South Carolina Transit Gamecock Express Shuttles, Soda Cap Connector, which allows tourists and locals alike to explore restaurants, lodging, arts, and entertainment in the Midlands business districts. And whereas the Comet transports more than 2.4 million passengers annually on a fleet of more than eighty buses, vans, and trolleys. And therefore, I, Allison Terasio, and Overture Walker, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Catch the Comet Month and ask our citizens to support our public transportation system as it provides essential services to the people of the Midlands.
Terasio.
Good evening, members of Richland County Council. We are so thrilled, humbled, and honored.
Let me stop you just for a second, just state your name for the record, as well as who you're representing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Pamela Bino Reed. I'm representing the Comet as the Director of Marketing and Community Affairs, as well as their Public Information Officer. And I would like to say that we are deeply honored and humbled to receive this proclamation in honor of our twentieth anniversary of being a regional transit authority. And we're also very honored to have Chairman Walker and Ms. Terasio as members of our board, and they help keep us straight. So we thank you for allowing us to continue to provide essential services here in the Midlands. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Terasio. Next item on the agenda is item five, approval of the minutes. Specifically, five A, which is out of regular session of council from September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, any changes, additions, or deletions to the minutes. You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Pages twelve to nineteen of what is in our agenda are minutes from a July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, not the minutes for the session you refer to here. So I don't know if, I realize somebody tossed them on our spaces here on our desk, but I don't know, Mr. Attorney, if we can go ahead and just arbitrarily include what was thrown on our desk without the public seeing it, or if we need to defer this for another meeting.
When we get to the county attorney, Mr. Malinowski, I had the same concern as you. And I spoke with the clerk, I believe I talked with you on Friday, I would think it was, Ms. Gorilla. So would you speak to the correction or when the correction was made?
That's correct, Chairman. So we have on the document, on the printed agendas that were sent to all council members, we had an issue with the system and it attached the wrong, the wrong minutes. However, we have sent another email to all council members to let them know of that mistake, and the new minutes were attached. The agenda that was publicized to the public had the corrected minutes on it. And it was.
That's what I was concerned about, the public one, right? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Chair, before, if I still have the floor?
Yes, you do, Mr. Malinowski.
Before we approve these minutes, item number eighteen during the motion period, where the unanimous consent was asked for the June thirteenth potential holiday by Ms. Maggie, I would like to reconsider that item, please. I've spoken to the attorney, and he said that I was the only prevailing side person, so I'm asking for reconsideration.
Second? Second?
Second.
Properly second, any discussion?
Point of order.
You recognize, Mr. Walker?
In the non-pervailing vote, second the motion?
I think that's fine, I think that's the only way that it's possible.
Understand it mathematically is the only way we can do this, but is it proper?
I think it's fine.
Good, thank you.
Second? Additional discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Oh.
McBride.
Oh.
Livingston.
Oh.
Well, so, Mr. Wright, you're recognized.
Yes. This, this is to reconsider what was voted on previously, so there basically will be, I guess, two votes. The first is to bring the item back up. So voting yes means you want to bring the, reconsider the item that was voted down last week, in the last meeting. So if you, if you want the item to come back up, you vote yes.
And if we, and we vote yes, and if the vote is successful, then the item, that means we get to consider it tonight.
Exactly.
And, okay. All right, so now that we have clarity, I guess, do we need to? Can we restart the vote? Or what's the appropriate parliamentary procedure, I guess, for folk to vote their conscience on this?
Yes, you can, since the vote, the vote has not been completed, you can redo it.
Madam Clerk, let's take the vote for reconsideration. Was, this is Councilman Malinowski's vote to reconsider, which was originally Councilwoman, Councilwoman Mackey's vote to declare Juneteenth a county holiday. Would that be correct, Ms. Mackey?
Yes, that is correct, that's the motion I made the last meeting and asked for unanimous consent. That did not happen.
It required unanimous. Right, because now he wants to.
Right, so if you agree, if you agree with reconsideration, the vote is yes. If you do not want it to be reconsidered, vote no.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Given the explanation, yes.
Livingston. Tereshia.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now that the motion is, it's, I guess it's back before us. Would it be appropriate to take the vote now, do we need to have it added to the agenda? So we can take the vote now?
You can take the vote now.
Take the vote now on it?
Right.
Okay, so the motion that is before us has a motion to approve Juneteenth as a county holiday. You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
Hey, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make a substitute motion on that, and the substitute motion will be that in the future, all federal holidays get recognized as county holidays, so we don't have to go through this again.
Oh, not way to go, Bill. Not right now, because this, it complicates it. So the motion that's on the floor right now is the motion to approve Juneteenth as a county holiday. Mr. Malinowski.
Juneteenth, yes, but any other federal holiday that may come about also?
We will.
We will automatically be granted that.
To simplify the process, though, Mr. Malinowski, can we just stick with the one item that's before us that's been reconsidered as opposed to going for all federal holidays in one fell swoop?
I talked to the administrator, he said he was fine with it, but if you want to create another motion another day, go ahead.
It'd be a lot simpler for me.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, there's no second.
What's that?
There was no second to a substitute motion.
Correct, I know there hasn't been a second, but.
Get a chance to get one.
You get a chance, you.
My apologies, okay, is there a second on Mr. Malinowski's substitute motion?
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion?
It's the chair.
Recognize, Ms. Baron.
Yes, so I think that, just so that it was clear, if I understand the intent of this motion, it will include Juneteenth and all other federal holidays to move forward. So if the federal government decides to, you know, make bowtie making a holiday, then now bowtie making holiday is a federal holiday and a county holiday. So it's all inclusive of that, which would mean Juneteenth would include, be included in this motion.
Any additional discussion? You recognize, Mr. McBride?
I just can't always agree with the decisions that federal government makes. So I could not just give a, a, a full one hundred percent for any holidays that the federal government would come up with. So I just have concerns with that.
Okay, then I withdraw that substitute motion, just make the motion to approve Juneteenth. Second.
We're back to the original motion to approve Juneteenth. All right, that's already, that was already on the floor anyways, okay. Any additional discussion? No questions, all right, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right.
Good job.
Live to approve.
Recognize, Ms. Mackey.
Thank you. As the original maker of the motion to add Juneteenth as a holiday, I'm thankful that all of my colleagues now do actually agree and that we can celebrate this holiday for all of our employees moving forward, so thank you.
Chair.
Recognize, Ms. McBride.
I need to move.
Second. Is reconsideration necessary?
We had to go through reconsideration for that.
Well, for, to get. I'm, Mr. Wright.
Right. I don't think you have to at this point, since it really has been reconsidered. So I think we're, we're fine with it now at this point.
All your motion for reconsideration, Ms. McBride?
I really, yes, sir, I'll take it.
Thank you.
Just.
Next item on the.
Motion to approve the minutes.
For five A, regular session, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, has been moved to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Tereshia.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item five B, pertains to the approval of minutes for the zoning public hearing from September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Any changes, additions, or deletions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion, Mr. Malinowski, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I see some items in here that I don't recall being in any of our information previously in any of our council agenda. It's pages twenty-five to thirty-one. Pictures and something about landmark properties, I don't recall seeing these in agendas before. Have they been?
Recognize, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Chairman Walker, those were documents that were presented to the council during the meeting by the parties. So you received the physical copy during the meeting, and it was added to the minutes.
During the meeting, we received them.
Correct.
Back there in the secret room, or?
No.
Out here.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
All right, any additional discussion, or questions, or observations? There'd be a none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tereshia.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item six, adoption of the agenda. Any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda?
The chair.
You recognize, Ms. Baron?
Uh, yes, so in our, in my report for rules and appointments, it was Historic Columbia was omitted, and I would like to add that to the agenda for an appointment.
That would go, I guess, under item, I guess, as item eighteen, A seven?
Correct.
Okay. Other additions or deletions or changes to the agenda? All right, there'd be none, okay, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Second.
Move to properly second, any discussion? There'd be a none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Pew.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Tereshia.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O'Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item seven, which is the report of the county attorney for executive session items. Mr. Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are four items for discussion in executive session. Eight, seven, A, budget process and council compensation. B, Allen University property request, seventeen forty-one Cushman Drive, Columbia, South Carolina, two nine two zero three. C, Green Street, Phase Two. D, information technology enterprise resource planning software contract.
Though if any of these items involve outside council tonight?
No.
Okay. All right, now, I do recognize that, I believe, item seven B, which is Allen University, I know it's listed as an executive session item, but also it's listed on the agenda, I believe, under other items as well. So would it be okay to take that up, well, I guess, later in the agenda for executive session as opposed to now?
Yes, I think it needs to, executive session needs to, at least for that item, needs to take place prior to the consideration of the item on the agenda.
All right, so next item on the agenda is item eight, which is our citizens' input. This is for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Oh, Mr. Chair, we don't have anyone signed up to speak for item eight A.
Next item on the. Next item on the agenda is. Next item on the agenda is item, uh, nine, uh, citizens' input, nine eight, must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda, items which a public hearing is required or a public hearing has been scheduled, cannot be addressed at this time. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual that has signed up to speak this evening, Pamela Robinson. If you would state your first and last name as well as your address, you have two minutes to speak. Upon the end of your two minutes, there will be an alarm that notifies you as well as I'll let you know that is end of your time. Please refrain from addressing any council members by name.
Okay. Pamela Robinson, 1154 Tahrone, Greenville, South Carolina, two nine oh five six. And you have to be evil and immature to be on this council. I have seen some things that they were doing to people the whole time, and the Supreme Court showed me everything it was doing wrong to people. They was having security guards actually meeting with people in the yard at the State House, harassing them, bribing them to get off the property, and got everybody in there who works in there on standby, paying attention to them, and letting them know, letting other people know, and security know when they're on their campus, so they could do their best to try to look out and try to help get rid of them. And then, they're aware that I've illegally put out my house, me and my daughter, uh, because I went to sleep with the landlord, and they know my arms, so their name is Kevin Johnson, and they took up for this man when I came over to the State House to, to talk to him, because he owes me a house. He put me and my daughter out of our house because I went to sleep with the landlord, and he told me I should have done it. And I went to go tell the security what he say, and guess what? Everybody on standby put, got me off the property. And on top of that, every time I came back after that, they always had security just following me around, harassing me, just in my business, trying to see what was going on. And the only reason that happened, because they make the laws up of all the businesses in the whole county. They make the laws with the, the city council people, and the, uh, county council people make the laws of all, how, all the businesses run in the city limit, and y'all, the county council, make all the bid, yup. Y'all didn't care nothing about me. Y'all didn't care nothing about me. I've been in jail illegally about eight, ten times, and had money stolen from me from the government so many times. They didn't care. They didn't care not one bit. I've been locked, I've been locked up illegally ten times because of that. And I was complaining to them, telling them I was contacting the Supreme Court, trying to, um, get a case. They had a Supreme Court nag, clerk of court, harass me and tell me, talk about something, "Oh, you can't come in here and file for no Supreme Court. You gotta get a lawyer to do it." Or you ain't allowed in here, you gotta send a, a, a statement about everything illegal going on, and we gonna look at it. I, I keep calling them, or we ain't never got it, we ain't never got it. Called back again after I keep harassing them, they finally got it. Ain't never give me a court date. And I was alerting people, I sent email.
Ms. Robinson?
People, they did nothing.
Ms. Robinson, that is your two minutes? Thank you. Mr. Chair, that concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is item 10, which is the report of the county administrator. Mr. Brown, you recognize, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of council, uh, my updates will be a part of your executive session. So that concludes my report at this time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item 11, which is the report of the clerk of council. Madam Clerk, you recognize.
I don't have any reports at this time, Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item 12, which is the report of the chair. At this time, there are no updates or announcements, uh, from the chair. Next item on the agenda is item 13, which are public hearings. Uh, item 13A, an ordinance authorizing several easements to Dominion Energy, uh, from South Carol-, what, I'm sorry, Dominion Energy, South Carolina, Inc., for the transportation of gas, oil, petroleum products, or any other liquids, gases, or substances which can be transported through a pipeline located on a property owned by Richland County along Clemson Road, and as is more fully described herein, that public hearing is now open. Madam Vice Chair, anyone sign up to speak?
No, Mr. Chair, no individuals have signed up.
You recognize, Mr. Livingston?
I think that was the one, one I've asked to, for the public.
Dominion Energy, uh, Mr. Livingston?
No, I'm sorry.
Or is it Project Bulldog?
No, it's, it's the next one, thank you.
Okay, so it's the next one. All right. Let's see, Madam Vice Chair, no one sign up to speak, correct?
No, sir, no one signed up to speak this evening.
That public hearing is now closed. Next item on the agenda is item 13B, and Mr. Livingston, you recognized?
Heard that public hearing to the 18th.
Second.
Properly second, September 18th, that's now debatable. So, uh, Madam Clerk, take the, uh, vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English? Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 13C, um, continuing with our public hearings, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 corridor, regional industrial park jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to Bull Street Apartments LLC, a company previously identified as project framework and other related matters. Madam Vice Chair, uh, well, first of all, that public hearing is now open. Anyone sign up to speak, Madam Vice Chair?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, we have one individual that has signed up to speak this evening, uh, Mr. Bob Cobal.
It's Cobal, or Mayor Bob, as we affectionately call you. Come on down.
Um, I, uh, Bob Cobal, uh, next approved, 3333 Hayward Street, Columbia, South Carolina. We represent the developer who would be here, except they're from the Tampa area and are dealing with some of the hurricane, uh, but, uh, I, I signed up just in case another speaker had a question.
Thank you, Mayor Bob.
That concludes all individuals that have signed up to speak this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Excuse me. Next item on the agenda is item 14, the approval of consent items. Item 14A, uh, twenty-two dash zero zero seven MA, the applicant being Lucky Daddy. Uh, this was a request, uh, to change his zoning designation from residential multifamily high density to office institutional at 116 Beatty Downs Road. TMS number R zero six one zero six dash zero one dash zero three nine. It's the second reading. At this time, I entertain a motion. You recognize, Mr. Malinowski?
And, Mr. Chair, move to approve all the consent items, 14A, B, and C.
Excuse, I'd like to remove, um, 14B, please.
14B?
Yes.
Well, I'll tell you what, Ms., uh, Ms. English, make this easier, that I guess, would it be a substitute motion to approve items 14A and C?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, is there a second?
Second.
So move to properly second. No discussions necessary. Um, Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Malinowski? You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
All right, next item on the agenda is item 14B, uh, that's twenty-two dash zero zero six MA. The applicant is Jared Moniki. It's a, um, a request to change the zoning designation from, and bear with me here, colleagues, but general commercial, light industrial, rural, residential multifamily high density to residential multifamily medium density, location is end of Idlewild Boulevard and Barn Street, TMS number, or numbers are one 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 dash zero one dash zero two fifty-four fifty-five, and now R one 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 four dash zero one dash zero two and thirteen. This is the second reading. I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to have this item deferred. Um, both attorneys, um, requested, um, time to speak and to work out just some litigation things, but there are no problems with the residents.
Properly second, that's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
I'm recusing myself from this vote due to my parent company representing the applicant.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, item 15, third reading items. Uh, you recognize, Mr. Livingston?
Yeah, that item was associated with, uh, that was, was deferred earlier. I moved that we defer this item to October 18th.
Livingston, considering that it's been, I guess, deferred earlier, I don't believe, I don't believe. Public hearing deferred, okay. It's moved to properly second by Mr. Walker. That's non-debatable. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? You?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron? O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 15B, um, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 corridor regional industrial park jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to Bull Street Apartments LLC, a company previously identified as project framework and other related matters. I entertain a motion. Properly second, any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? You?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Um, I'm recusing myself from voting on this due to my parent company representing the company mentioned.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 15C, an ordinance authorizing several easements to Dominion Energy, South Carolina, Inc., for the transportation of gas, oil, petroleum products, or any other liquids, gases, or substances which can be transported through a pipeline located on property owned by Richland County along Clemson Road, and as is more fully described herein, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Move to properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski? You?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is item 15D, uh, so ordinance authorizing the levying of ad valorem property taxes, which together with the prior years carryover and other state levies and any additional amount appropriated by the Richland County Council prior to July 1, 2022, will provide sufficient revenues for the operation of Richland County Government, though in the period from July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023. I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Properly second, any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Let me move on to the next item on the agenda. I would just like to recognize, uh, our county auditor, the Honorable Paul Brawley, who is, uh, present this evening. Good to see you, uh, auditor. Next item on the agenda is item, uh, 16. I'm sorry, Mr. Brawley? You recognized?
Mr. Chair, can I get you all to reconsider that vote, please?
Move to reconsider. Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? You?
Oh.
McBride?
Oh.
Livingston?
Oh.
Horatio?
Oh.
Joe Walker?
Oh.
Baron? O'Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton? Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item 16, which is the report of the Administration of Finance Committee that will be provided by the Honorable Bill Malinowski. Mr. Malinowski, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this item relating to the Information Technology Department is relating to enterprise resource planning software. The software we're currently using goes back to 2007. That software is outdated. It's costing the county quite a bit of money in ma- maintenance and repair every year, not to mention the labor-intensive time that is being wasted in this. And so they have come up with a new management system through Workday software to replace the aging existing software. And the first five million of this will be paid for through the American Rescue Funds, and then over a 15-year period, the total cost will wind up being about eight hundred, nine thousand dollars per year, and that will come from the normal budgeting process. Now, the committee did request additional information be provided prior to final approval. I spoke with the administrator. He provided the answers to me that I asked for. I think I probably was the only one asking for them. And, uh, I'm, I'm fine with the answers I was given that, uh, pretty much we're going to be filling in the blanks that are there at the time of signing. Uh, we're going to change some dates that were incorrect and correct them, and that, that pretty much is it. Other than that, the committee does recommend approval of this item.
And you've heard the recommendation of the committee. Uh, any questions or any discussion? You recognize, uh, Ms. Mackey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, just for clarification, this item was also under executive session, and I just wanted to be clear that there wasn't any legal advice we needed to receive prior to voting on this.
Recognize, Mr. Wright?
Yes, this is an item that, that is a part of executive session. Uh, I think it's my understanding from, uh, Mr. Brown that, that the issue has been dealt with, so it's no longer needs to go to executive session, uh, unless the county council members would like to discuss it in executive session.
That's the county, and it feels this. Oh. Okay. So, uh, uh, Mr. Wright, you would be comfortable with the body voting on this, uh, without going into executive session?
Yes.
Okay. Or the recommendation of the committee. So again, any additional discussion or questions? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride? Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I moved reconsidered previous.
Second.
Properly second. Any discussion? There'd be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Oh.
You?
Oh.
McBride? Livingston?
Oh.
Horatio?
Oh.
Joe Walker.
Oh.
Baron.
Oh.
O Walker.
Oh.
Mackey.
Oh.
English.
Oh.
Newton. Motion fails.
Next item on the agenda is item seventeen, report of the Economic Development Committee that will be provided by the Honorable Paul Livingston. Mr. Livingston, you're recognized.
Yeah, item seventeen A, developing a multi-county park with Fefia County authorized execution and delivery of an agreement governing the multi-county park, authorizing inclusion of certain property located in Richland County in the multi-county park, authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement and other matters related. This is the first reading of the item, and the committee recommendation is for approval.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion or questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Oh.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
I'm recusing myself from this vote due to my parent company representing the company involved in this.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Item on the agenda.
That completes the report of Economic Development Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston. Next item on the agenda is item eighteen, which is the report of the Rules and Appointments Committee that will be provided by the Honorable Gretchen Baron. Ms. Baron, you're recognized, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have several committees or commissions that we, the committee would like to make recommendation to full council. To keep things simple, I'm going to loop items eighteen A, one, two, and three in this first recommendation, as those items are listed on your agenda where we are recommending those individuals that are listed there. And for item three, we are recommending to re-advertise and not appoint. So that, just to restate, for the Hospitality Tax Committee, we are recommending Tanya Hodges for Transportation Penny Advisory Committee. We're recommending Christine Kiefer. And for item three, for Building Codes Boards of Appeals, we will re-advertise for that one.
Heard the recommendation of the committee with respect to items eighteen A, one, two, and three. So any discussion, any questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote with respect to items eighteen A, one, and two?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
We have the floor, Ms. Baron.
Thank you. Our next appointment is for the Employee Grievance Committee. And the committee, our committee, is recommending Susan Hunt, Tara Smith, and Betty Etheridge, and those are items A, B, and C.
Heard the recommendation of the committee with respect to item of, well, fifteen, no, I'm sorry. Eighteen. Eighteen for A, B, and C. Any discussion, any questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride. Baron.
Yes.
Livingston. Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
For Ms. Baron.
Next item is the Business Service Center, and the committee is recommending five A, Ruth Naji.
Heard the recommendation of the committee with respect to item eighteen five A. Any discussion, any questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski. Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker. Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And our next item for appointment is the Board of Assessment Appeals. We are recommending A, six A, Tasha Thompson.
Heard the recommendation of the committee with respect to item eighteen six A. Any discussion, any questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski. Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
For Ms. Baron.
Next item is the item that we amended our agenda for, which was for Historic Columbia. That would be, we are recommending seven C, and I apologize, that name, I just remembered that you guys didn't have the listings, but that person's name is Suz- Sue, I'm sorry, Lisa Burden, B U R D E R N.
Heard the recommendation of the committee with respect to item eighteen seven C. Any discussion, any questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski. Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
And one final thing, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
While discussing our comprehensive rules for council, we did run across an item that we need to address as a body. We have a committee that is for internal audits, and this internal audit committee is designed to be led by an internal auditor, which we do not have on staff. So we'd like to bring this to your attention and to administration's attention. If indeed we plan to hire an internal auditor, then we'd like to know that that is the case. Otherwise, this committee is no longer needed because it cannot meet without having that employee in place.
Body, body, Ms. Baron. Comment? Brown, anything from administration?
No, sir, not at still, Mr. Chair. I think that particular employee, I think, is an employee that's designed to be really independent of the county administrator, per se. So that, we'd have to discuss how you want to do that, because that's really not supposed to answer to me. That was designed to be overall an internal auditor that looks at that. My staff actually has internal auditors to address administration protocols and processes that we have with certain grants and things of that nature. So we had mentioned that before, so I just kind of want to remind you that that's going to be a collaboration effort that I think is led by county council, but we can clarify with the county attorney at a later date. But I hear what you're asking, Ms. Baron, in the committee.
Baron, for bringing that to the body's attention. Baron, does that conclude the Rules and Appointments Committee report?
It does, sir, and I just want to stress the, as we are looking at our comprehensive rules, it would be helpful if we have a decision on this particular committee and this particular position as soon as possible, because it's our goal to return those rules back to full council by the next meeting.
Baron, of all the items that were part of your report tonight, anything needs to be reconsidered? I'm not sure that's why I'm asking.
We don't normally.
Okay, all right, start out as. All right, next item on the agenda is item nineteen, which is the Report of the Transportation Ad hoc Committee that will be provided by the Honorable Jessica Mackey. Madam Vice Chair, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Item nineteen A is Dirt Road Package N, award of a contract. The Transportation Ad hoc Committee recommends the award of the contract for Dirt Road Package N to the lowest bidder, which is McClam and Associates. To note for council that McClam and Associates did meet a goal, SLBE goal of nineteen percent in their bid and have, as you noted in your packet, a fifteen, fifteen percent contingency in their total amount. That is the committee's recommendation.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? You recognize, Ms. Newton?
Just a quick comment that I'll make here. I have a constituent that if you're watching, sir, this includes Cornell Adams Road, which will finally be paved at last. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newt. All right, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride. Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next item is the Resurfacing Package S, award of contract. The Transportation Ad hoc Committee recommends award of a contract to the lowest bidder, Palmetto Corp. of Conway, for resurfacing Package S.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion or questions?
Here.
You recognize, Ms. Baron?
And so I didn't, didn't see whether, and I know that we try to do our due diligence with providing these contracts to local vendors, and just out of curiosity, because I didn't see locations necessarily listed on the, on the individuals or companies that were bid, bid, who bid on these items, but did we have anyone from Richland County or the area to bid on these items? Just out of curiosity.
I will let staff address that, but I will state that in the packet, this is the lowest bidder, and it was even four percent lower than the engineer's estimate, which I think came in good for the work that we need to be done. And I know that was part of the selection process, but I will defer to Director Maloney or a staff member from procurement for additional information.
Recognize Director Maloney.
Thank you, Chairman. The, there are bidders on here that were local, CR Jackson Incorporated. They are about, you know, one million dollars higher at four point one million, and the little bit came in at three point one million. We really, after doing our due diligence with procurement, don't have an option to change from the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. But there are some more local contractors. Palmetto Corp. of Conway is maybe not headquartered here, but they're certainly doing a lot of work in this area.
Baron, you're recognized.
Thank you. So while I do respect the process, but as I've said before, that I just really believe that anytime that we can invest in our local businesses, we should try to do, make every effort to do so. I understand lowest bid prevails and how procurement works. I definitely respect that process as well. But as we look at processes in the future, if we could continue to give priority to those businesses and those individuals who live here, who work here, who pay taxes here, I think that's very important.
Recognize, Ms. McBride.
Thank you. I would just like to add that I too agree with Ms. Baron in terms of the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and I know that that is the county's practice. But we also need to include local and diversity and making sure that we have equity. And I've tried to stay off of equity for about three weeks. But I'm back on equity issues and, Mr., I'm not going to call your name, Mr. Administrator, for us to get into our equity program, making sure that we hire Equity Director and make that a priority, because we need to reflect on the demographics here in Richland County. And, Mr. Chair, I'm, I apologize if I'm calling out names, but Mr. Wright, I know that there are some legal issues, but I also know that the federal government does it, and there is a way to ensure that there's equity in terms of contracting and the providers that we use. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Wright, you recognize.
Yes, that is correct. There, there is a way to do it, but it, there's a process, including potentially an equity study or diversity study or other type of studies that have to be, that are required by the government to be done before you can deviate from the lowest possible bidder. So if that is something that, you know, the county wants to do, those studies have to be done prior to that.
You know that I'm waiting on that study, and I'm waiting on that director, Mr. Administrator. Thank you.
Where are we?
The committee had a recommendation for approval.
That's right. So we're gushing right now. Any additional discussion? Okay. All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Next item is nineteen C, Wetland Credit Sales. The Transportation Ad hoc Committee recommends approval for four mitigation credit requests. One for SEDOT for the US twenty-one Bridge Replacement Project in Lexington. Two is West Fraser, Inc., for a development project. Three is Point Grand Columbia LLC for Powell Road, Powell Road and Technology Circle. And four is GS Jacobs Creek LLC for Blythewood Farms Phase Two. That completes the committee's recommendation for Wetland Credit Sales.
Heard the recommendation of the committee. Any discussion or any questions? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton. Motion approved.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item nineteen D is Bull Street Elmwood Avenue Intersection. The Transportation Ad hoc Committee recommends award for the Bull Elmwood Intersection Project to CR Jackson Incorporated.
Recommendation of the committee. Any questions or discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston. Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O, O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair.
You say you don't want to reconsider A for your.
Oh, please. I move to reconsider.
Mr. Chair, may I please consider, reconsider items nineteen A through D, please?
A and.
Through D.
A through D.
Thank you.
Move to properly second. Okay, any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski. Q.
Oh.
McBride.
Oh.
Livingston.
Oh.
Horatio.
Oh.
Joe Walker.
Oh.
Baron.
Oh.
O Walker.
Oh.
Mackey.
Oh.
English.
Oh.
Newton.
Oh.
Motion fails.
After, Q, you recognize.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring to my colleagues' attention that CR Neil is a local, a local person that received a contract tonight.
But, Mr. Q. And now, Madam Vice Chair, I'm assuming that concludes your report.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that concludes the Ad hoc Committee.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Next item on the agenda is item twenty. Other items. First would be an item twenty A, that's Allen University.
I'm going to defer item twenty A to after our executive session.
Heard after our executive session?
Okay.
Let's move to properly second. It's non-debatable. So, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski.
Yes.
Q.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Horatio.
Yes.
Joe Walker.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
O Walker.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
English.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next item on the agenda is.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize, Ms. Newton? You recognize, um, Ms. Newton?
Thank you. Move to approve items twenty B and C.
Chair?
Recognize, uh, Ms. Barron?
I'd like to remove item twenty-
Entirety, right? So really then, I guess, could we just treat that as a substitute motion to approve item twenty C?
Second.
Okay. So let me move to properly second. Any discussion? There be a, there be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski? Pew? McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. Next item on the agenda is item twenty-one. That's the executive session and in fact, that takes us- Yes, you recognized, uh, Ms. Barron?
Um, I've had that one moved, removed from that list, but I do want to vote on it.
Oh, so you want to-
Twenty B?
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve twenty B two and four.
E, two and four. Okay. It's their second.
Second.
Let's move to properly second. Any discussion? There be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston? Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Barron? Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Chair, do we need to reconsider the, uh, resolution under twenty C?
Motion?
B and C, okay. Move to reconsider B and C.
Second. Properly, uh, second. Any discussion? There be a none. Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
McBride?
Oh.
Livingston?
Oh.
Horatio?
No.
Joe Walker?
Oh.
Barron?
No.
O'Walker?
Oh.
Mackey?
No.
English? Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Item on the agenda is item twenty-one. It's the executive session, which really takes us back to the items under the report of the county attorney. Um, items seven A, which is the budget process and council, um, compensation. And Mr. Wright, I believe that item, you, we want, you want to provide legal advice with respect to the, uh, I believe it's the ordinance. Okay.
That's the language of the order.
Language of the ordinance. And then also with respect to item seven B, which is Allen University property request. Uh, I'm assuming the basis for executive session on that, does that have to do with a proposed sale or purchase of property?
Yes.
Okay. And then with respect to item, uh, seven C, the Green Street Phase Two, is that what, uh, I'm assuming legal advice as well as a proposed contractual agreement with respect to that item?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I entertain a motion. Let's move. It's their second. Move to properly second. Any discussion? All right, there being none. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Horatio?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Uh.
Barron?
Yes.
O'Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right. There be an executive session. Stay down.
Any discussion? There being none, Madam Clerk, please take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresho?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
All right, we went into executive session pursuant to statute thirty dash four dash seventy B with respect to item seven A, which is the budget process and council compensation, and to discuss just the language of the ordinance, and we received legal advice also with respect to item seven B, Allen University property requests, we just received legal advice as well on that item, and also with respect to item seven C, the Green Street Phase Two, legal advice was also provided, and no action was taken on any of those items. Going back to item twenty A on the agenda, that's item twenty A, Allen University property request, seventeen forty-one Cushman Drive, Columbia, South Carolina, two nine two zero three, I entertain a motion.
Chair.
I'm sorry, you recognize Mr. Walker?
I yield to Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, you recognized?
Mr. Chair, I move that we give the administrative permission to approve the request presented to him from Allen University.
Second. Properly second, any discussion? There being none, Mr. Brown, you recognized?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to make sure that's in reference to the sampling?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, so move to properly second, any additional discussion or questions? All right, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
I recuse myself from this vote as I am a staff member at Allen University.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresho?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Mr. Brown, does item twenty eight, does that require reconsideration at all?
That will be helpful so I can communicate.
We'll reconsider.
Seconding discussion, there being none, Madam Clerk, take the vote, please.
Malinowski?
Oh.
You? McBride?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Teresho?
No.
Joe Walker?
No.
O Walker?
No.
Baron?
No.
Mackey? English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Being no further business, next item on the agenda is item twenty-three, you recognize Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to withdraw that motion at this point in time so I can reword the motion to be correctly stated after conversation with our attorney.
Mr. Malinowski, my apologies for whatever reason I thought the motion had been withdrawn already, but so noted. Okay, item twenty-three.
We'll adjourn.
Properly second, it's non-debatable, Madam Clerk, take the vote.
Malinowski?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
McBride?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresho?
Yes.
Joe Walker?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
O Walker?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
You're adjourned.